Okay, good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. On behalf of the members of the school board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. The school board member, Mr. Marvin Harris, is excused from this particular meeting. We will begin our meeting with the invocation and the pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Stanford Elementary, Ms. Charlie Silva and Kendu Brown. First, Ms. Kendu will come forward and provide us with the invocation. Please tell us a little bit about yourself, and then she will be followed by Ms. Charlie, if that correct?
Hello, my name's Kendu Brown, and I'm from Stanford and third grade class, Ms. Brightfield. My favorite subject is art, and my second favorite is writing. I don't know how it happened, but one day I had a problem. I didn't want it, I didn't ask for it, I really didn't like having a problem, but it was there. Why is it here? What does it want? What do you do with a problem? I thought. I wanted to make it go away. I shoot it, I scout it, edit, I tried ignoring it, but nothing worked. I started to worry about my problem. What if it swallows me up? What if my problem sneaks up and gets me? What if it takes away all of my things? I worried a lot. I worried about what would happen, I worried about what could happen, I worried about this and I worried about that. And the more I worried, the bigger my problem became. I wished it would just disappear. I tried everything. I could, I could to hide from it. I even found ways to disguise myself, but it still found me. And the more I avoided my problem, the more I saw it everywhere. I thought about it all the time. I didn't feel good at all. I couldn't take it anymore. This has to stop, I declared. Maybe I was making my problem bigger and scarier than it actually was. After all, my problem hadn't really swallowed me up or attacked me. I realized that I had to face it. So even though I didn't want to, even though I was really afraid, I got ready and I tackled my problem. When I got face to face with it, I discovered something. My problem wasn't what I thought it was. I discovered it had something beautiful inside. My problem held an opportunity. It was an opportunity for me to learn and to grow, to be brave, to do something. It showed me that it was important to look closely because some opportunities only come once. So now I see problems differently. I'm not afraid of them anymore because I know their secret. Every problem has an opportunity for something good. You just have to look for it.
Thank you. Ms. Charlie, will you come on up? And tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm Charlie from Stanford Elementary in Ms. Brightfield's third grade class, and my favorite subject in school is reading because it fills my mind with creativity. And, and this whole thing reminds me of one of our greetings that we do in the morning, which is a little-known fact about me. Please rise as we now say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated.
Thank you. Well, I think we owe these two young ladies another round of applause. Well, we had two readers, and wow, she, Kendu, you read that with so much conviction. And Charlie, you led us perfectly through the pledge and through the moment of silence. And I hope that was for those who are in the military and veteran state and that things, or those folks who are having tough times out west with the fires and those things. So we want again, thank you, and supporting Charlie and Kendu tonight, all their family and their school's family. Would you please stand and be recognized? And the board appreciates your encouragement, these two young ladies, and actually bringing them here to the meeting this evening. So again, thank you very much, and a job well done. Our next item on the agenda would be board recognitions, and I think we do have some of those today. And so if, Dr. Parker, would you join me in front? And we'll, we'll come down.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have the pleasure of presenting this month's school board recognitions. Ensuring that young people are financially literate is paramount to prepare them for future financial success. Two of our recognitions this evening illustrate the district's success in this area. Working in Support of Education, or YSE, is an educational organization dedicated to building financial literacy, fostering business and social entrepreneurship, and preparing students for college and global workplaces. The organization's literacy certification program provides high school students with financial education and the opportunity to become certified financially literate. Students learn more about personal finance when they take the YSE standardized financial literacy certification test. This evening, we're pleased to recognize two Newport News high schools that are named 2017-2018 Blue Star Schools for their student's successful performance on the National YSE Financial Literacy Certification Test. Please join me in congratulating Warwick High School. I'd like to call the CTE team up from Warwick High School, as well as their interim principal, Mike Nichols. Woodside High School was also named a Blue Star School, and accepting on behalf of their school's community are their CTE teachers and their assistant principal, Grace Foley. In order to earn the YSE Blue Star School designation, a school's students must have eighty percent, an eighty percent pass rate on the literacy certification test, with either a majority of students at any given grade level taking the test, or an average of eighty-five percent or higher by all students who take the test. This national standardized test is administered to students at the end of the personal finance course. Students who pass the test receive a financial literacy certification. To all of you, please share our congratulations with the other students and the staff. Thank you. Financial Literacy Program. As educators who teach the Career and Technical Education Course in Personal Finance, they are striving to ensure that their students develop the skills for lifelong, successful financial decision-making. Twelve Newport News educators have been named 2017-2018 Gold Star Teachers because at least ninety-three percent of their students in at least one of their classes passed the YSE Financial Literacy Test, which is also a Virginia Board of Education-approved certification. They are joining us this evening. Please come forward. From Demby High School, Lisa McAllister. And Linda Richardson, a retired educator, also earned a Gold Star Award, so we'd like to congratulate her as well. From Heritage High School, Tiffany Smith. Also named Gold Star Teachers from Menchville High School, Adrian Caldwell. From Warwick High School, Michael Bellamy. And Reginald Neely. From Woodside High School, Stephen Brown. And Tina Shorter. The Virginia Standards of Learning for Economics and Personal Finance requires instruction in economic concepts, and teachers have to help students develop thinking skills that include economic reasoning, decision-making, and problem-solving. High school students have to meet a state requirement to complete a one-credit economics and personal finance course prior to graduation. With the help of these dedicated educators, our students are not only satisfying a graduation requirement, they're earning state and national certification. These dedicated educators are also, were also recognized earlier this month at the Money Power Conference for Financial Literacy in New York City. Again, thank you for helping our students with the tools and the life skills they need to become college, career, and citizen-ready. We'd like to hold you for a picture. If their students, I think their, if their students do well on that test, then the teachers deserve a reward. And I also want to take a moment to acknowledge any family members who joined these educators this evening, and also their school administrators. Would you please stand and be acknowledged? And I'd also like to acknowledge our Career and Technical Education Supervisor, Tonette The Dorothy McCullough School Nutrition Award celebrates Virginia school divisions that have gone above and beyond by operating all available federal child nutrition programs and achieving stellar participation in the school breakfast program. The award is named in honor of our former First Lady of Virginia, Dorothy McCullough, in recognition of her efforts to end childhood hunger in the Commonwealth. For the second year in a row, Newport News Public Schools has earned this award presented by No Kid Hungry Virginia. In recognizing the 2018 winners, Mrs. McCullough said, "This year's school division winners are great examples of how to effectively implement and expand nutrition programs so their students have access to the nutrition they need in the classroom and lead healthy lives. It takes a dedicated team to ensure that our students have access to nutritious meals at school." To accept this recognition on behalf of the Child Nutrition Services Team, please join us in congratulating the Supervisor of Child Nutrition and Wellness, Debbie Pascal. Area Cafeteria Supervisor, Christine Delgrazo. And Area Cafeteria Supervisor, Christine LaMaster. The Executive Director of Child Nutrition, Kathy Alexander, was unable to join us this evening, but we wish her well. To qualify for this award, our Child Nutrition Services Team exceeded the criteria governing breakfast, after-school meals, and summer meals. Newport News Public Schools serves a nutritious breakfast to all students free of charge. Thirty-nine schools serve free lunch to all students. Our staff also serves after-school meals or snacks for after-school program participants and athletes, and during the summer, three meals are served to students in Spark and other programs, and free lunch is provided at several sites for the city's youth. Only thirteen school divisions in this state earned this recognition for 2018, and Newport News Public Schools was the only division in Tidewater to earn this award. Team, congratulations on this honor, and thank you for all you do to support our students. This month is the Virginia School Boards Association Take Your Legislator to School Month. In an effort to promote a closer relationship between public education and this Virginia State Legislature, the Virginia School Boards Association encourages each school division to invite state legislators to visit their schools during November. One of the goals is to create opportunities for productive dialogue so that educational and political leaders can work together to ensure that we provide the best possible education for our students. Students will also have the opportunity to interact with elected officials and learn more about the roles and responsibilities of the Virginia Assembly Members. To commemorate this observance, Governor Ralph Northam signed a proclamation. In summary, some of the highlights include, "Whereas a strong and effective public school system is essential to the economic prosperity of Virginia and ensures that we continue to make social, technological, and scientific advancements; and whereas school boards and legislators must work together to promote high academic standards and excellent facilities that help all of Virginia's students become productive, hard-working individuals; and whereas Virginia's school boards play a vital role in fostering close relationships between schools and legislators to strengthen and improve Virginia's public education system." In honor of Take Your Legislator to School Month, Newport News Public Schools is hosting a tour and a dialogue on Wednesday, November 28th, to highlight some of our programs and student accomplishments and our school-building needs. We look forward to welcoming our state legislators, city council, school board, and local business leaders later this month. This week marks the annual observance of American Education Week, when school districts across the country celebrate and showcase public education. Our school district is commemorating American Education Week by focusing on our mission, ensuring that all students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. Schools are hosting special events and showcases. Each week, our schools are posting promotional messages and publicizing how students are becoming college, career, and citizen-ready through their social media using the hashtag #NNPSProud. Many of our social media followers are also sharing these posts, so we invite our family members, PTAs, booster clubs, and the entire community to join us in promoting the great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. Again, we congratulate all of our honorees this evening. This concludes the recognition portion of the meeting. At this time, we'll take about a seven-minute break so that our honorees and their guests may choose to leave, if you wish to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have the opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about seven minutes. Thank you.
High school graduates in Newport News Public Schools are moving beyond state standards and setting a new goal of excellence. In 2018, more NNP students graduated on time, and each year, less and less students are dropping out of school. Both of these stats are far beyond the average found across the Commonwealth. The 2018 graduating class in Newport News sustained last year's historic on-time graduation rate of ninety-three percent, which is higher than the state average of ninety-one point six percent. The graduation rate has increased significantly from seventy-two point nine percent a decade ago in 2008. An achievable dream high school stands out with a one-hundred percent graduation rate for the third year. And more students are staying in school, with the NNP dropout rate decreasing from twelve percent in 2008 to just two-point-one percent in 2018. This current dropout rate is lower than the state average of five-point-five percent. In 2008, Newport News Public Schools established a national award-winning dropout prevention and recovery program. Online courses, graduation coaches, and community-based education are just a few of the programs that assist students in graduating on time and excelling in the classroom. Newport News Public Schools has cause to celebrate after receiving a generous grant from the Department of Defense and the National Math and Science Initiative. The grant, of almost eight-hundred thousand dollars, will implement a college readiness program at Demby, Heritage, and Warwick High Schools, which will give all students access to the advanced classes needed for academic and career success in the 21st century. The National Math and Science Initiative, or NIMZI, is focused on broadening access to rigorous advanced placement courses for all students, while also ensuring that military-connected students have access to high-quality educational opportunities. To this end, NIMZI's College Readiness Program will increase the number of students taking and excelling in college-level math, science, and English courses at three NNP high schools. The grant funds teacher training, extra study sessions, additional classroom materials, and advanced placement exam fees. During a breakfast celebration in the Marriott at City Center, school system administrators were joined by local and state officials, commanding officers from Joint Base Langley-Eustis, local business and community leaders, along with NIMZI and DOD representatives. Students from the three benefiting high schools shared how their magnet programs are preparing them to be college, career, and citizen-ready, and entertained the audience with their musical talents. NIMZI's College Readiness Program is already in over one thousand public high schools across thirty-four states, and the results are overwhelmingly positive. Through NIMZI's support, Newport News Public Schools anticipates our high school students and staff to write their own stories of success. At Hilton Elementary School, students use miles to measure their amount of fun. For the fifth annual Hilton Hustle 5K and Mile Fun Run, students, staff, and friends came together on a Saturday morning, running and cheering with costumes on, to celebrate ninety-nine years of academic excellence at Hilton. Once again, Hilton's PTA and a small army of devoted volunteers presented a successful hustle for the school and community to enjoy. Two-hundred-sixty-three runners made this year's event the biggest yet. As the PTA's largest annual fundraiser, the Hilton Hustle provides resources and supplies to support academic success in the classroom. After a fun warm-up session with CNU's basketball team, young runners sprinted off for a one-mile fun run. Principal Annette Walls proudly handed out medals to each runner, while former principal Barbara Nagel cheered on runners disguised as the cat in the hat. Runners of all ages and abilities enjoyed the scenic 5K race through historic Hilton Village, while many participants competed in a number of contests, including most creative costume and wildest tutu. With the Hilton Hustle growing each year, the Herons can't wait to see what next year's centennial birthday celebration will bring to the starting line.
Caring for others is an honorable calling, and many compassionate individuals naturally gravitate towards careers in the health sciences, where knowledge, skills, and attentive care support health and wellness for people across the world. Extensive training and years of advanced studies are needed in this career cluster, so Newport News Public Schools is proud to offer the Governor's Health Sciences Academy at Warwick High School, giving our students a head start towards a successful career in healthcare. Health sciences is the fastest-growing career field at Hampton Roads, as well as across the nation. And of course, many of these occupations offer a lucrative salary range, which means students must be well-educated and prepared to compete for these high-demand jobs. The Governor's Health Sciences Academy at Warwick High School is prepared to offer students the keys to success by excelling academically through experiential learning, as well as opportunities to gain college- opportunities to gain college and career readiness skills, earn industry certifications while in high school, and help others through community service. Warwick provides four pathways through the Health Sciences Academy that allows students to specialize in the career field that interests them. Students who successfully complete the academy will be well on their way to a rewarding profession as a registered nurse, physical therapist, lab technician, massage therapist, research scientist, or a number of other related careers. If you're interested in jump-starting your future STEM career by attending Warwick's Governor's Health Sciences Academy, talk to your school counselor or contact Warwick High School.
Hello, welcome back, and hope that you enjoyed our School Board Spotlight. During our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the meeting and then near the end of the agenda. The board is very interested in your ideals and opinions, and we wish to hear from you and your opportunity for your input on the operations and policies of the school division. However, this is an opportunity for the board to listen to your comments, and as such, the board will not engage in dialogue with the speaker or the audience. Speakers with specific questions will be referred to the superintendent or the appropriate office. So that everyone who desires to address the school board may have a time to speak, we ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. When you begin, a green light comes on, a yellow light signals you have 30 seconds remaining, and then a red light and a beep, we ask that you conclude your comments. So at this time, we do have some cards, but in a sense of protocol, I like to call it, we do have an elected official that's in the audience, and I'd like to recognize one of my fellow school boards from another division. We have Mr. Mason, would you please stand? Dr. Mason, thank you for all you do in schools in Hampton, and welcome to our school board. That being said, we do have some cards. And first up, we have Dr. Wayne Smith. Would you please come forward? And as I see, in a fraternal way, the Divine Nine, he's with Phi Beta Sigma, is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, welcome to Newport News.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chairman Brown, members of the school board, and good evening, Dr. Parker, Superintendent of Newport News Public Schools, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Wayne K. Smith, President of the Zeta Delta Sigma Chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity was founded at Howard University in Washington DC, January 9th, 1914, by three young African-American male students. The founder, the Honorable A. Langston Taylor, the Honorable Leonard F. Morris, and the Honorable Charles I. Brown, wanted to organize a Greek letter fraternity that would truly exemplify the ideas of brotherhood, scholarship, and service. The fraternity's motto is Culture for Service and Service for Humanity. The three national programs are Big and Better Business, Education, and Social Action. Today, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated has blossomed into an international organization of leaders. Tonight's focus is on our educational program and support to the Newport News Public Schools. The Zeta Delta Sigma Chapters' educational chair is Brother John Harris, who's with us tonight. The educational program developed on the fraternity's traditional emphasis on the education of academic achievement as an ingredient to success. The two components of the educational program is adoptive school and scholarship. The adoptive school component is designed to get Sigma men into the schools. The Zeta Delta Sigma Chapter has adopted Carver Elementary School, we are proud to say that, under the leadership of Izzy Brown, Principal. The chapter has donated children's books to Carver Elementary School to assist the reading program. Additionally, the chapter has adopted Demby High School's band program under the direction of Edgar Rawls III. The second component of the education program is scholarship. The Sigma Beta Club serves young male students between the ages of eight and 18. The Sigma Beta Club students who remain consistent with attendance and participation until graduation from your high schools will receive a monetary scholarship. The Zeta Delta Sigma Chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated fully support the Newport News Public School Board in meeting the educational goals of its students. And secondly, the Zeta Delta Sigma Chapter will provide input to the school board and the superintendent when community issues arise that may impact the educational process. Here tonight, joining me are the Brothers of the Zeta Delta Sigma Alumni Chapter and Brothers of the Beta Gamma Chapter undergrad of Hampton University. Please stand, brothers. Thank you so much, and if we can do anything for you, please feel free to contact us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Next, we have Jermaine Knight. Please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I would like to thank you for allowing me to come before you today with my issue in hopes that it will be resolved. I deem it absolutely necessary to amend these two rules for the school dress code as follows: the prevention of wearing non-religious headwear or head coverings in any kind, hats, hoods, sweatbands, bandanas, etc., and the ban on tank tops, tube tops, halter tops, or shoulder tops. So what is the issue with such things? Is a hat disrespectful or shoulders unprofessional, something taboo or sexual? Not at all. If so, to whom? Many of the traditional and conservative administrators that I have personally spoke to are advocates for such rules, thinking that they are distractions and do not promote professionalism. But I find that younger teachers and students alike agree that this is unessential. Such things are even silly to be considered unprofessional or distracting. So is it because the older ones are wiser that their opinions vary? Not so, just stuck in tradition. Of course, a long time ago, it was deemed unprofessional for women to even wear pants. Surely, if someone exposed their calves, they were harled. It is foolish and condescending to associate an article of clothing with a trait. We have progressed, and we ask that the school does too. These are new times with new ideals, new people, and it is your duty as the school board to ensure that the rules and regulations be adjusted accordingly, so that each group be taught in an environment that reflects their culture. If we remain complacent, we die. If any institution had remained as it was when it was first created, it undoubtedly failed. Progression is key, advancement is our mission. So how is it that hats, shirts that expose the shoulders have any exispigence? Isn't that a minute thing? Yes, it is insignificant. And if that is so, aren't the rules in place to prevent them irrelevant too? Headband, no headband? It makes no difference. With that in mind, it is imperative to remove that old tradition that supposedly advocates for excellence and decorum. A snake must shed, a bird must molt to bring new life. It is in fact a minute thing, but a single step in the right direction is the only thing that could bring forth the light of the hope for a brighter future. How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. Of course, there are other insignificant rules and customs that the school has, but if I tried to present them all at this moment, it would be overwhelming. So I start here. We must do away with all trifles, one by one. A small step, all part of a bigger plan. I request that this school board help me this day so that we begin to shed the old tired rags of our predecessors and step into the new clothes of progression, just a small change to make way for a revived institution. All things need improvement and amending constantly. If we get rid of the fluff, we can zero in on the bigger issues. Our teachers have more concern than our students apparel. The security guards are overwhelmed with all the useless regulations they must enforce. It's a waste of energy to enforce these rules, a waste of time we could use for a greater. Now, I'm not trying to read the dress code completely, it is honorable and important for structure, but if we can free some of the load, why shouldn't we? The insignificant takes a toll and comes with a price. Amending is imperative in the name of progression. To turn a blind eye from this is nothing short of negligence.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Ms. Brianna Powell?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Parker, and members of the board. My name is Brianna Powell, and I go to Menchell High School, and I am a senior. Take a look around this room. We would not be here today if it not had been for the world changer, Maria Jones. Last year, Maria, working with the Newport News Public Schools Youth Development Department, designed and co-founded Bloom. Maria often led the planning meetings with students, staff, and the community to organize the first Bloom Conference. After the conference, Maria helped to implement Bloom Clubs in each of the middle schools and continue to serve Bloom as an empowerment coach, which is our the yellow shirts. In addition to Bloom, Maria founded an organization to help showcase local talent called 757 Underground, which promotes the arts among youth and provides them with a safe space to exhibit their talent and connect to the community, described by one teacher as a rock star. Maria is also founding member of the Newport News Citywide Student Council Association Executive Board, which she helped to launch in 2016. She has also served the city as a member of the Mayor's Youth Commission for the past two years. And last year, Mayor Maria was able to serve as a student representative to the Newport News Public Schools School Board, the highest student leadership position in the school division. A talented performer, Maria is also a member of the Woodside High School's Jubilee Choral and Chamber Orchestra. Recently, Maria participated in the Virginia Teen Miss Pageant and qualified to compete at the national pageant level. In addition to leading and representing students and excellence in academics, Maria still manages to work a part-time job. She is fearless and committed student leader who helps to drive positive culture across Newport News Public Schools and the school division. So to my friend and one of my closest people, it is with great pride that we, Anne Bloom and Ms. Adams, recognize world changer Maria Jones.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Jones, thank you for all that you do, for your fellow students, and for the Newport News Public Schools. We really appreciate that.
It's something I love, so it doesn't even feel like I'm doing that much.
Next, we have Rhonda Wagner. Please come forward.
Good evening, I'm back again. This time, not for request, but just to deliver something. Last month, you did approve the plane donation, and the aviation students have taken time to write all of you thank you cards, because they do very much appreciate it. My son is an aviation student, so if he would please kindly go over there to Ms. Hinton and give her the cards, thank you for working on his social skills. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any more cards? There being no other cards, again, I want to thank all those who came forward this evening. We'll move the agenda to items number three, our consent agenda. 3.01, the minutes from the board retreat, October 5, 2018. Minutes from the work session, October 16, 2018. 3.03, minutes from special meeting, October 16, 2018. 3.04, minutes from our regular session, October 16, 2018. 3.05, our financial reports, child nutrition services, October 2018. Revenue and expenses, October 2018. And last but not least, I believe we have 3.06, our personnel report. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. Is there any question? There being none, Ms. Hinton, please call a robe.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Ms. Surrulzlaw.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
And thank you very much. And at this time, I'm going to pass the microphone over to our superintendent, Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to announce two principals who will be joining their prospective schools in the very near future. I'd like to start by introducing Dr. Wendy Nichols, the new principal at Woodside High School. Wendy, Dr. Nichols is a familiar face, having served three years, currently in her third year, as principal of Gildersleeve Middle School in Newport News. Prior to joining the staff at Gildersleeve, Wendy served two years as principal of Dutchrow Elementary School, and a combined 18 years as either a teacher, reading specialist, instructional supervisor, or principal in Newport News Public Schools. Dr. Nichols is a solid instructional leader who understands the importance that Newport News Public Schools plays in the community. She has, as an educator, she's a resident, and also a parent in our community. She is joined this evening by someone you may know fairly well, our chief academic officer and supportive husband, Mr. Brian Nichols, and family, please stand and be recognized. And Wendy, congratulations again, and if you have any remarks, you're welcome to do so at this time.
Thank you, I'm very excited about the new challenge.
All right, and we look forward to your service and your leadership. Thank you very much. I am also pleased to introduce Dr. Kelly Mason, the new principal at Warwick High School. Dr. Mason is currently serving as principal of Lynn Haven Middle School in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Prior to that assignment, Dr. Mason served a combined total of 25 years in Virginia Beach as a social studies teacher, instructional specialist, assistant principal, and principal. While serving in central office, Dr. Mason was responsible for the training and sustainability of the Advanced Via Individual Determination, or AVIT, college readiness program throughout the city. In that capacity, she impacted the lives of hundreds of first-generation college students. Kelly is joined by her supportive husband, Dr. Richard Mason, who is a school board member for Hampton City Public Schools. Dr. Mason, also congratulations and welcome, and thank you for being here. And, Dr. Mason, if you have any comments, we'd like to...
Just to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm excited about being back on the peninsula. I've spent all my time in Virginia Beach, and I'm just looking forward to being here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Parker, and again, congratulations to those two new appointments. As we heard in our closed session, that these two individuals are dynamic, and we're looking to look for great things from both of you. Again, thank you, and thank for all your family members who came out tonight to support you. So again, another round of applause for those appointments. Okay, we'll move the agenda to number four. There's, I believe, no action items, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
There being none, we're going to proceed on to our reports and information. 5.01, we'll have Mr. Pat Finneren come forward. He's going to present to us a detailed position of statements and on some key K-12 education issues that we may or will be devoted on in next year, I believe, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hunter, and good evening to you and to Vice Chairman Brown, Dr. Parker, Superintendent, and members of the board and our audience. It's that time of year again to take a look at the upcoming General Assembly session and issues of importance to the school board and education in general. And these are presented in your legislative program as a draft program that was supposed to... And these are presented in your legislative program, as a draft program that was posted, I believe, last week for your review. And it's the board's opportunity really to convey not all the issues, but some of the key issues that will be discussed in the upcoming session. And this is, again, is a draft for your review. And during the course of the session, of course, for those who haven't been here before, we'll be updating you, there will be hundreds of education bills introduced, but we'll be updating you through written reports as that goes on. So let's go to the next one. Can I do this here? Yeah. Just take, take a look at some of the dates of interest, just to get started. The session actually starts on January 9th. It's always the second Wednesday of January. It's a short session, 45 days, so by February 23rd, the session will actually be over. But the veto session, and this is important, will actually not take place until April 3rd. That's when everything is actually finalized. And of course, that's after you have approved your budget. So that's always of interest because you have to approve the budget before you actually know for good what your financial condition will be. Other dates of interest, just a couple, two days from now, the VSBA Delegate Assembly will be taking place, and I'll mention that a little bit later. And November 28th, which Michelle mentioned earlier, is the Take Your Legislature to School Day. And there's a few others up there of interest, especially the governor's budget proposal. On December 17th, we'll see what the governor's proposing for education and all other organizations in the state. Our next slide will take us to some of our priority positions. And in the program that you have, the written program, you'll see that we actually start with thanks to our legislators, and I want to say that, for increasing funding for K-12 education in the 2018 session. They added about $600 million more dollars to K-12 education over the biennium. That's over two years. And so we want to say thank you for making that a priority. But you'll also see that we're asking for more funding in 2019 for school facilities, school safety and security, and for teachers. And you might ask why? Because $600 million over a biennium, it seems like a lot of money, and it is. But the answer is on, is in the chart on your screen. You'll see that this is really not a mission accomplished moment for the state. There's still a lot of work to do. Even after this session, K-12 education funding has not returned to the pre-recession levels when you count inflation. And just to take a look, to make it down to, down to the level, Newport News Public Schools actually, when you account for inflation, receives $833 less per student than it did pre-recession, 2009. And so another major loss, you know, we want to make sure that we, we keep this on the front burner and we try to get back to our pre-recession levels and above, of course. So another, one of the major losses that we saw during that 10-year period or so was capital improvement funding from the state. We'd like to ask, this legislative program asked the school, state to restore some of the school construction funding. We used to get about $1.2 million in, actually, school construction grants annually. That went away. The state literary fund loan has not added projects for several years. And we've been told that some of the new lot, well, it's not new, but some of the lottery money that's been allocated for school construction is flexible enough to use, but it's also competing with many, many, many other, other items that are needed, such as salaries, Virginia retirement payments, and about a dozen other things that are in there. And we all know that school conditions do impact student achievement. Studies, you know, in many areas of the country have shown that when a school is bright, clean, modern, has great facilities, and meets the new learning styles of collaboration and teamwork, scores go up. So what are we going to do about that? And this is a prime position this year because the state right now has a golden opportunity to make a big impact. In July, I believe it was of this year, a ruling, a Supreme Court ruling called South Dakota versus Wayfair, and you may have ordered some things from Wayfair online, said that states can in fact require companies like Wayfair and others to collect sales tax on their sales, even if they're not located in the, in the state. This means that the state, Virginia, could collect upwards of $200 to $300 million from internet sales annually and take that and leverage it into new revenue through bonds, potentially upwards of a billion dollars for school construction projects. And as you look at it, this new funding could be used for either current projects that are coming on, that were, future projects that are coming on, or if we'd already done, or other schools or divisions have already done projects for CIP, to use it to pay off their CIP that they've already, debt they've already incurred. So we think now is the time, just point to that one statement at the bottom, it says if lawmakers take the right action, the state could have, finally have the revenues to make these vital investments. And we think it's very important just to make sure our legislators know that they are vital investments and that we need them. Moving along, next priority position is school safety and security. And we're very, very fortunate that the state has had two major committees looking at this, a select committee from the General Assembly and the Governor's Children's Cabinet. They both come up with dozens and dozens, I think it's about 70 recommendations. The final report from the House Select Committee will be done in December 15th. And because there are so many positions, we haven't actually, potential legislative actions, we haven't actually taken a position on any of them that we think are going to be there. We just set some parameters there. And I'd like to just draw your attention to the first one and just say that any legislation occurring should really effectively and efficiently address issues through multiple strategies, including stool, school support, some facility design, personnel technology. And then the bottom one, let's not have it create an unfunded mandate, as so often happens with some of our legislation. Next priority that you have is teacher recruitment, retention, and pay. That is really a, an issue that we've looked at every year. This is not a budget year. We don't expect to see another budget for teacher increases. But we'd like to ask the General Assembly to make good on its promise, you see it down in the bottom bullet, in 2017, they set 138 out of 140 legislators, one was absent and one, I think abstained, said that their goal was to pay teachers at or above the national average. So we'd like to ask them to start planning for that this year. And secondly, teacher recruitment, we want to recruit teachers, we also want to retain them. And another thing that they could do, legislators could do, is create some more programs or add to some more programs that help do that. You'll see on the left-hand side of the slide, that teacher enrollment, that enrollment in teacher programs has dropped by over 200,000 people in just a few years. So we need to expand the pipeline and try to do that by increasing flexibility and licensure, providing more, more support for coaching, mentoring, professional development, and something that we do very well in Newport News, teacher residency programs. Finally, the VSBA Delegate Assembly, again, is coming up in two days. Your school board representatives for that are Ms. Simons, who is the delegate, and Mr. Hunter, who is the alternate, in case Ms. Simons cannot fulfill her duties. So you've been provided with the, well, about a hundred-page document on that, and that boils down to really about seven new positions. I've looked at all of them, talked with Ms. Simons briefly about them. They've all been approved by the VSBA Board unanimously, and I think that they're all good to go in terms of voting on them on Thursday. But if you do have any questions, I'd be, you know, happy to answer something about them. The only one I would say is that there's a, there's a requirement in there that would, position in there that would require testing for colorblindness. And if we could just ask the General Assembly if there's a cost of that, that we provide, if they provide some funding for that, that would be good. So that's really it for the legislative update. Next steps are to monitor the issues, provide legislators with a draft copy. Of course, we'll see them on the 28th. This will be an action item at the board meeting, and during the session, I'll be up there to support your priorities. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, your, your draft legislation memo notes a 2015 Rutgers Graduate School of Education Study comparing teacher salaries to non-teacher positions, and I'd just be very interested to have a copy of that study.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Yes, Ms. Jones?
So I just have one question.
Yes.
Has there been any thought on using possibly student voice in an effort to get the legislators to kind of look at, to kind of push the issues that we're currently, you know, hoping, we're gunning for? I know one thing that I've really learned as far as my kind of starting career in political advocacy and things is that they're capital, like the legislators, and they're really starting to take a new look on youth voice. So that might be something positive that could maybe get legislation that is favorable to us pushed if we found a way to incorporate student voice and, you know, tell the legislators hey, it's not just the school teachers and school board members that want this, it's the students that need it as well, if they're saying it.
That's, that's a fantastic idea, and I'd be happy to work with you or other students during the session. And they did actually have an opportunity, they've come into a couple schools over the summer and fall and actually talked with teachers about school safety in particular. And so I'd love to continue that and if we can talk more about that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, not best.
What, could you share, what are the legislators that are against taxing internet sales? Like, could you just share what are a couple of their arguments? I'm just curious.
Well, we haven't heard that anybody's against that. No one has come out that I've heard, other than that there's a caution about raising taxes in general. There's also one issue that we did hear that I think we've addressed in our legislative program, is that if you tax the internet and provide money for schools to build, to build those schools, what, how will we be fair to schools that, school divisions that have already built their schools and don't need any more money? And actually, I don't think that's, that's actually a case in Virginia, but I think this position says the money should go for either new construction or to pay down the debt on old construction. That was one of the main criticisms of the idea that I heard.
Were there any, just clarify, were there any concerns that money going somewhere else?
Yes, there, there is. The, actually, the, the money, there was a bill that was passed maybe a couple of years ago that said if Congress authorized internet sales tax, the money would go to transportation in Virginia. There is a small loophole in this that will allow it to go to education or something else, in that Congress did not pass this, this, any legislation to do this. This was a Supreme Court decision, so Congress, in all fairness, did not pass anything that we require it to go to transportation. So we think there's legitimate, you know, call to have some of this money go to education. Does that help at all?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you.
Are there any other possible sources of revenue that could be used towards education that are on the table?
Well, the lottery funding actually has gone up. Now, that will be, you know, usually go to our operations, of course, or could, but if it goes up enough, it could be used for more school construction as well. Again, the lottery is, has a role in funding many, many, many things, such as textbooks and about a dozen other things. But if the lottery does go up, that could help. We also had a major announcement today, that Amazon is coming to our state. That may have a big economic impact. It will take a while, though, but that is a bright spot in terms of economics in the future, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Fineran? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We'll, we'll move the agenda. Item number 5.02, I guess we're having this empty sweat to come up. Each year, the secondary teachers, schools, and supervisors are given the opportunity to suggest new courses, suggest revisions to the existing courses, or recommend eliminating existing courses offerings. A committee is made up of both central office personnel, school-based administrators. Review the requests and make recommendations to the superintendent until you will give us that report today.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Dr. Parker, and members of the board. It is my privilege to bring to you a new course proposal for school year 2019-20. The new course proposal that I'm bringing to you is brought to you every fall, and this year, we are proposing one new science course, a science elective specifically for ninth graders. So just to remind you and share with you, every time we propose a course, all courses and proposals are examined with an eye toward the Virginia standards of learning and also the college career and citizen-ready skills, which are ingrained in everything we do in Newport News. Specific, so, specific CCC skills that will be in tonight's proposal include critical thinking, problem solving, and social responsibility, all embedded into the science standards that you will see in tonight's course proposal. We have a process, of course, for going through new course proposals. It began in September 20, on September 20th, where we shared and disseminated the application process to all teachers and administrators. Then on October 22nd was the deadline for submitting that application. And then we met the committee, which is the Curriculum Advisory Committee, made up of central office staff, administrators, and our instructional supervisors of our content areas. We met on October 25th to review, hear presentations, and rule on which proposals we would bring to you tonight. So the new course we are proposing is environmental science specifically for ninth grade. This environmental science class is a VDOE-approved course. It will count as an earth science elective, and it includes pretty much a semester of earth science concepts and a semester of biology concepts. It's ideal and a great way to introduce and backfill and firm up science from middle school, and it allows a pathway to go into other sciences that we offer at the high school. It's also a way of making sure that we can introduce and, and firm up those standards before we get to a verified credit and an SOL test in high school. Our HR department is, of course, very pleased because we are allowed to use endorsements with either a biology endorsement or a health, or a earth science endorsement. So we do not fear anything with staffing for teaching this class in ninth grade. Just to give you a sample of the pathway that the students could take if they choose to take earth, environmental science as ninth graders, they could then go into earth science or biology, thereby getting their verified credit through an SOL test. After that, they could go into biology if they went into earth science, or they could go into chemistry. We also have a rich array of about eight, exactly eight, biology electives that they could go into after that. And then as a senior, they could go further into a biology study, or they could return to those concepts of environmental science and take AP Environmental Science as a senior. So that's just a sample pathway. There are other options, but I wanted to provide for you a sequence. But we have so many rich offerings in our science department that this is just one possible pathway. So what is our implementation plan? It really falls into three steps. Tonight, of course, I'm requesting your consideration for approval next month. After that, our students would be in course selection and registration next February, where they would choose their courses, and then we would know the need for this class. And then after that, beyond that, it would be spring and taking us into summer, where we would build out the curriculum based on the VDOE standards that have been provided. We would do professional development for the teachers who have been identified to teach this course, and then we would also do the materials. So that is the proposal for tonight.
Any questions? Yes, Ms. Jones?
So I know now AP Environmental Science is currently offered at the ninth grade level. So I've kind of got a couple of questions about that.
Sure.
So will it then be moved to be offered specifically at the senior level? Is it still open?
It was, it is absolutely still open.
Okay.
It's, this class is really probably for students who need more science time after their middle school experience, where obviously, if you're going into AP science, you are pretty confident in science. This is a class that can help with that. So no, this doesn't interfere with AP Environmental Science at all, which is already available ninth through 12th.
Now, are the curriculum similar to a lot of times, I know, when students will opt in to take an AP class in a given subject and say that... to take an AP class in a given subject and say that the AP is too stressful or too rigorous, then we'll just go to the honors level, so is the curriculum going to match up so that students can do that?
The curriculum doesn't match up that tightly, because it is more of an introductory class for those concepts that you will see in AP Environmental, where AP Environmental is intended to be quite rigorous.
Okay, so would it be, one more question last?
Absolutely.
Would it be offered at just the regular course level or as an honors class as well?
Only offered as a regular.
Okay.
Yes, because we are keeping this just for ninth grade, and it is really just offered for students. We would work pretty closely with the counselors to find out what profile of a student really needs this extra year before they go into that verified.
Awesome, yeah.
Any other questions? Dr. Bass?
Will this course be offered to all students to include Achievable Dream? I know sometimes they're a little different, but will it be offered to all ninth graders?
Yes, we are putting it in the vote for all ninth graders, and then, of course, we have to go through the same process of how many students are registered for the class, if the class can make for us. But it is absolutely something that can be offered at Achievable Dream, because I would go back to the idea that the endorsement is earth science and biology, and those are staffed at Achievable Dream as well.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
Yes, just given that students have the ability to take earth science or biology in the ninth grade, now, what was some of the thinking behind, when you looked at some of the results for those ninth grade students offering environmental science prior to them moving into earth science or biology?
Yes, so we have in middle school, we have about 700 students who were worried about their performance in eighth grade, in eighth grade science, and of course, we're working on that in our middle school, but we're thinking there is a good reason to have another opportunity for them to firm up those science skills before getting into biology or earth science, which would create more success for those classes. So this isn't a pathway for all students, but it is an option, because in Newport News, of course, we like to have opportunities for all of our students.
Any other questions? Yes, Sarah Swanson?
So, one question that I know will come later.
Yes.
Will be, can it be offered for eighth grade students? Will it be something that would end up being an opportunity for middle school?
We could probably, we will certainly consider that in the future. I think we want to try it right now with ninth grade. We run into a little bit of endorsement issue, because our middle school students, our middle school teachers, rather, are usually endorsed in physical science, not in biology or in earth science. We usually find that student, that teacher at the high school. But that could be, that could be addressed, we would just need some time to build that.
Yes, Ms. Jones?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I just want to remind everyone watching that this is the hard work that we do in administration, that we don't get some curriculum for free from the state, that we actually have to develop, the professional develop, the curriculum development, the material procurement, and it's a lot of hard work to make sure we're offering the right courses to our students. So, thank you so much for doing that hard work.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Way.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to item number 5.03, our Gifted Services Program. We'll have Ms. Becker-Dyke, Ms. Deckeret, and she is going to give us a report on the programs and services for the education of our gifted students.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Hunter, Chairman, I'm sorry, good evening, Dr. Parker, Chairman Hunter, and Vice Chairman Brown. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the Gifted Services Program. I look forward to sharing with you the wonderful things that we have going on in Newport News Public Schools. Tonight's presentation will take you through a journey of gifted services. We are guided by the regulations governing the educational services for gifted students, and it will take you through our professional development opportunities, not only for our gifted teachers, but also available for all Newport News Public School staff. We will talk about the mission for the Gifted Services Program, as well as our gifted identification process. And I will also talk with you about our enrollment trends and our equitable representation of our student populations in Newport News Public Schools. So who is a gifted learner? There is not one specific definition of a gifted child, and that's what makes my job so much fun, because I get to work with so many different types of gifted learners. And so, when I go out into our classrooms, I see students who have vivid imaginations. They may be more comfortable with adults than they may be with their own peers. They are going to be curious, they're going to have questions. They are going to be out-of-the-box thinkers. They are going to be the ones that like to take things apart and to put things back together, and they may still have pieces left over. They're going to have intense interest, they're going to have more academic abilities, and may be a little bit socially awkward, and they're going to have excellent critical thinking and problem-solving skills. And our gifted students come from all sorts of populations. So we're going to have English language learners, and we're going to have students who may also receive special education services, as well as gifted services, and those are twice exceptional students. So within the Gifted Services Program, our mission is to make sure that we challenge our students so that they are reaching their maximum potential academically, socially, and emotionally. And we differentiate our instruction as we teach accelerated and advanced content and skills. So how do we do thus? We make sure that we foster our academic and our intellectual growth of our students, kindergarten through 12th grade. And we do this by making sure that we have our in-depth learning of all core subjects through creativity, analytical thinking, abstract ideas, and real-world problem-solving. We are guided by the regulations governing the educational services for gifted students, which is set forth by the Virginia Department of Education. And this document guides our local plan for the gifted, which is the five-year plan that we created here in Newport News Public Schools. And it was a collaboration of teachers, the Gifted Services Department, administrators, and parents. And through this, Newport News Public Schools make sure that we are in compliance through our program model and the curriculum that we provide, our definition of giftedness for our students, our professional development opportunities, not only for our gifted teachers, but for Newport News Public School staff, as well as our equitable representation of our students in our programs. So now I would like to take you through a journey of what our program model looks like here in Newport News, because it is unique to Newport News Public Schools. We have a community gifted site model. And why do we have that? Because we listened to our parents, who told us that they wanted to make sure that their students could receive gifted services at their home school, and they did not want to have to leave. And so, for our kindergarten through second-grade students, they receive pull-out services at all of our elementary schools. And with our pull-out services, they can receive that through their enrichment block, and they have creativity and problem-solving, analytical thinking, STEM services. We work with math and literature, and that is really the basis of the primary gifted program, which then builds going into our third through fifth grade program, which is still a community gifted site model. And we offer that at 16 elementary schools. While we only offer it at 16 elementary schools, all of our second-grade students are tested, and they have the opportunity to go to those sites. And that second, that kindergarten through second-grade program then builds going into our third through fifth grade program, so it's a wonderful transition. And at those 16 elementary sites, we then work with those advanced curriculum, and we build upon our already fabulous Newport News Public Schools curriculum, and we augment it with junior grade books, Hands-on Equations, Rensselaer Online Learning, and our William &amp; Mary Language Arts Curriculum. And then, we transition into our middle school gifted program, where we have five fabulous sites at an Achievable Dream, Heinz, Dozier, Gildersleeve, and Huntington at Heritage, where we work with advanced curriculum and all of the core subjects, science, social studies, math, and English. Then at the secondary level, we are meeting the requirements through dual-language honors and advanced placement. We have 28 advanced placement courses available to our students at the secondary level. In addition, we have the IB program available at Warwick High School for International Baccalaureate. And then, our students as juniors and seniors can participate in the Governor's School for Science and Technology, where students can take three rigorous strands, such as biological science, computational science, and engineering. Yet, we believe that students need to go beyond the academics, take them out of the classroom, and be, and go into college career and citizen-ready. And two such programs are Odyssey of the Mind and Robotics. And this is going to allow the students to be collaborators, innovators, spontaneous thinkers, and problem solvers. And this is how we're going to prepare students, because they are going to be able to solve problems and solutions, and these programs are available for elementary, middle, and high school students. In addition, we allow our students the opportunity to participate in the Scripps-Spelling Bee in middle school, as well as the Summer Residence of Governor's School for our high school students. Now, I've already talked with you about our identification process of the characteristics of our students. Now, how do we train our teachers in order to do that? That's through our professional development opportunities. We have University of Employment Development Sessions on our gifted competencies, and the gifted competencies are set forth by the Virginia Department of Education. And those are on gifted characteristics of our learners, social-emotional needs of gifted students, curriculum, content differentiation, and twice exceptional learners. In addition, we provide specific content for our teachers on Hands-on Equations, as well as William &amp; Mary Language Arts Curriculum, Rensselaer, and other complete, other content-level courses. We also have a cohort partnership with William &amp; Mary for offering endorsement courses in gifted education. And this is a partnership set forth by Human Resources, because they have earmarched money to pay for the tuition for our teachers to participate in the college-level courses. In addition, our teachers are also participating in online courses to earn their endorsements in gifted education. In addition, we also provide opportunities for our staff members at the school levels to learn about identification and referral procedures. How do you refer a student for gifted education, and who can do that? A student, a parent, an administrator, a librarian, and a school counselor. All students can be referred for gifted education, and we also district-wide refer students for second and fifth grade. So now, I would like to take you through a journey. Just this morning, I received a call. We have a new student who just arrived into Newport News Public Schools. And this student was referred by a teacher who attended one of my UA courses this past summer. And she called me and she said, "Dr. Becker-Dyke, I just remembered your characteristics training, and I believe that this student should be referred for testing." And I said, "Well, give me that child's name." So, I started the referral process. What we did, we sent home the parent permission to test form. And with that, we also sent home the parent evaluation of gifted characteristics. With that, on that form is a form that lists, does your child have abstract thinking? Does your child have a large vocabulary? Any advanced ideas? Problem-solving skills? And from there, we also sent home a teacher evaluation, similar questions. And then, we find out about the report card, grades, in-class work. Next, we set up testing for that child. And then, we take all of that information, once we, once we have all of that information, the gifted screening committee meets. And then, once that gifted screening committee meets to determine eligibility, we send home the information for the results. We use a variety of measures to determine the testing. The Naglary Nonverbal Ability Test, as well as the Otis-Lennon School Ability Test. Excuse me, just, thank you.
I got you.
Thank you so much. Now I can continue. Thank you. Sorry. The Naglary Nonverbal Ability Test, as well as the Otis-Lennon School Ability Test, and the Stanford, I'm sorry, and the screening assessment for gifted elementary school students are the aptitude tests that we administer. Those aptitude tests measure problem-solving and general reasonability for our students. We also administer for our second through our 12th grade students Achievement Test, the Iowa Test of Basic Skills, as well as the Otis-Lennon, I'm sorry, as well as the Stanford. All of those together, we will review as part of the gifted screening committee, and then we will send the results to the parents. In addition to the results that we send home to the parents, we also send newsletters and information. If they are the third-grade student, we will send open house information, because we realize that is such a transition, especially if the parent and the student are changing schools. Now, once we send that information, the work within the gifted department begins, because we begin tracking the enrollment data. And here, you can see the enrollment data for gifted services. And I have shown schools year, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen. And we show approximately 11% of the students in Newport News Public Schools are identified as gifted. And that is, on average, the amount of students across the nation. So we are doing very well within the gifted program here in Newport News. And we have approximately 2,760 students identified right now in Newport News. And it is important to know that this chart shows first grade through 12th grade. Our kindergarten students are not listed, because we identify our kindergarten students in the spring. However, one of the goals in Newport News is to make sure that we have equitable representation. So the next piece is going to show the piece, because we want to make sure that our gifted program is as diverse as our population in Newport News Public Schools. And I think you will see that we are leading the charge in Newport News Public Schools, because we are ahead of the game in terms of minority representation, and we are ahead of the state and the national average, because currently, we have 55% minority students in our program in Newport News Public Schools. And I'd like to tell you how we did that. We began the equity initiative back in 2011, in 2012. After a review of data for three years, we realized that we had schools that were not referring students from underserved populations. And we realized that we needed to have a culture change. We needed to do staff development training with our schools, based on gifted characteristics. And we had to talk with them so that they could understand how to refer students. And then, we went in and we modeled lessons. Part of the gifted resource team and myself, we went in and we modeled lessons with the students and with the teachers. The teachers would observe the gifted resource teachers' teachings so that they could see the higher-order thinking skills that the students were eliciting, and so that they could say, "Oh, I think these students should be referred." And then, we also conducted creativity lessons with the students. And out of that, you will see our success stories. Richneck Elementary School and Achievable Dream Academy. Out of that, Richneck Elementary School started referring students as early as 2013-14. And they built their primary gifted program in the K-12 program, or K-2 program. And from the K-2 program Primary Gifted, we were able to start a site for 3-5 in the gifted elementary program. That then doubled the program going into Dozier Middle School. And so, not only have we seen the elementary program grow, we've also seen the middle school program grow. And Achievable Dream. When we first started out at Achievable Dream, we had less than 10 students referred for gifted screening. We worked very hard to make sure that we were referring students, and then, we were able to grow the program at the K-2 level, and then, we were able to grow the program at the 3-5 level, starting with the gifted program there. Not only have we grown a gifted program at the 3-5 level, we have now expanded into the middle school level. And I'm happy to say now, these students are going into the high school. So those are our success stories, to make sure that we have a true equitable representation in our gifted program. So, we did not do this alone. It is a true parent, school, and community involvement effort, through ongoing communication, community events, programs for our gifted students, informational meetings, and gifted open houses. We make sure that we are bringing in our community partners, providing options for our parents on social-emotional needs of gifted learners. How can they provide opportunities for our students, especially with summer enrichment programs, to keep them involved, and making sure that we are showing that we are listening to our parents? So our next steps, continue to solicit feedback from our So, our next steps, continue to solicit feedback from our stakeholders, continue our ongoing parent and community involvement, and make sure that we are continuing our professional development options because we realize that we need certified teachers. And we realize that we need more people to be trained in gifted education. That is the only way that we are going to make sure that we continue to grow the gifted program. And we need to continue to work with Human Resources to recruit teachers with endorsements in gifted education. I'll be happy to take questions now.
Okay, any questions? Ms. Jones?
So, I just, amazing presentation, by the way. It was awesome, really informative. Um, I just have one question. So, is behavior a factor in considering eligibility for gifted students?
You know, that is a very good question. Because one of the things that I share when I do my social emotional needs of gifted learners, I talk about psychomotor tendencies. And that is something that they talk about because psychomotor tendencies, that is a behavior. And it talks about how that can be considered ADD versus, and they need lots of movement. They're getting up. And that's part of what people consider that can be a negative. But with training, we can say that it's not necessarily a negative, that they need movement. That's a characteristic of somebody who is gifted, that it can be considered that, and somebody needs to get up, and they need to move, and that they are always talking. No, it's not a negative, that it is a characteristic of their giftedness. And that's why it's so important for people to be trained to recognize that it's a positive and that it's a characteristic of giftedness. And so, is behavior an issue? Not with training. And to be able to, to see that some of those characteristics are not really a negative. It's a positive, and it's a part of that child. And if we can take it and turn it into a positive and really streamline it, I think it's a positive thing. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Simons?
Um, do we still use the Iowa Student Achievement Test for elementary students?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and everybody in every school does, takes the Iowa?
We use that for second through 12th grade.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
As part of the achievement test.
Okay.
Dr. Best?
Could you tell me a little bit about students that may not have been identified until middle or high school? Can you share a little bit about that?
Yes, ma'am. So, we implemented the fifth-grade testing because we were recognizing the fact that some students were not being identified until middle school. And having been a middle school teacher, I was drawing on my own background. And I realized that I was having students come into my classroom that I knew were gifted, but I recognized that they were not being identified. So, one of the first things that I did when I came to this position, I did a little focus group. And I said, "Do you think that this would be a good idea?" Because I wanted to make sure that we were trying to capture those students beforehand. And so, I think that that's a positive piece. Do I think that we should try and capture students beforehand? Absolutely. And we do referrals at the third-grade level and the fourth-grade level beforehand. It is a little bit harder for students going into the middle school level, but I think it is a positive transition year anyway going in because it's, uh, the students are able to go in at the feeder schools. But I know that when we try and have the students to go into the middle school, we certainly try to make sure that they are working up to that potential. And then, if we have students who maybe need a little extra work, we try to make sure that we're working with the students. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes. So, I have several questions.
Yes.
So, I, I noticed that there is a requirement by the Virginia Department of Education for the program, for having a plan, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Having a plan. Um, I, I understand, I've heard from other, uh, heard that other school divisions don't necessarily have. Um, well, there are some school divisions that don't have a gifted program. And so, is it, if you have it, then you must have a plan, but you're gonna like not to have a gifted program? Is that tru, is that true?
That is true.
Okay. Um, and, and, uh, I made note in, in two thousand twelve, thank you for the, this is a great report, that in two thousand twelve, uh, there was a lot of introspection done, and a lot of, um, great progress has been made. I believe that at that time, there was a report on, there wasn't a sufficient number of gifted certified teachers. And how has that level risen since two thousand twelve? Where are we at now, and how many, you know, students can we serve with the number of gifted teachers? And how many more do we still need to, um, develop?
I will say that we are in need of gifted certified teachers, and that is probably true across Virginia. I know that when I speak with my colleagues in other districts, that is something that it, that we consistently talk about. Uh, I know that from listening with Mr. Finneran's, uh, report that the number of teachers out there coming out of the other colleges, that's something that we are in desperate need of. And I know that one thing that we are looking towards, and what the Virginia Department of Education says, is that even if we do not have endorsed teachers, our teachers need to be trained in the competencies. So, that is one thing that the Newport News Public Schools is doing, is that making sure that if our teachers do not have the endorsement, that they are trained in the competencies. And what I mean by that, that they have to have knowledge of gifted education characteristics, the social emotional needs of gifted learners, and the curriculum, and the assessment piece. And all of those I do cover in my University of Employment, Employee Development Sessions that I offer. I typically do sessions in the summer during the year, as well as with my brand-new teachers. And so, I, I make sure that I cover those. The Virginia Department of Education just submit, or just, uh, released brand-new information about the competencies. I have meetings again this week. They will be submitted to my teachers. So, I'll always make sure that they have information about the competencies.
Okay.
But yes, we need gifted endorsed teachers. And I think Newport News Public Schools is making a concerted effort, especially with Human Resources paying half the cost of the tuition towards that. And gifted services is actually purchasing the textbooks for that. So, we are trying to make it cost-effective for our teachers to earn their endorsement.
And I'm curious as to, because, because on this slide, we have sixteen schools for elementary, five schools at middle, uh, at middle school level. Uh, and then, of course, there's a, a wide coverage at high school. So, um, I'd just be curious to know offline, which elementary schools don't have the program? Which middle schools don't have it? And then, my last question was just in relation to, so we made great progress in relation to minority enrollment in the gifted program. But now, um, how does income play into that? What is our ratio of kids on free reduced lunch in the gifted program versus not being in that? Uh, so, I'd be interested to know where we stack up in, in terms of those kind of income levels.
Okay.
And Ms. Jones?
Get that information.
Are you, are you?
So, actually, the question is related to the minority piece of it.
Yes.
No, we're doing great with the minority. Enrollment, but how do we ensure that they're staying enrolled in gifted programs, specifically the more rigorous ones, such as the Governor's STEM School and IB?
Yes. And I think that is something that we are trying to make sure that they are staying enrolled. Uh, I know that I sit on the Advisory Council for the Governor's School for Science and Technology. And so, that is something that we make sure that they are, that is something that we're trying to make sure that they are staying enrolled, definitely. And, uh, with the IB program, I work directly with Mr. Holler, who is the program coordinator of the IB program. So, that's something that we are always making sure of. But, uh, yes, I don't have those exact numbers right now, but I can certainly get back to board.
And Mr. Brown?
I think you have another question. Well, we have one more question. Uh, so, and this is a, a question related to the, the screening process.
Yes.
So, we have second and fifth grade, uh, and then, after that time, then there's referral.
Yes.
Is it, um, because we have constrained resources, are we using like a sampling without replacement-type system where if you got tested in second grade, uh, but then didn't, if you didn't get tested in second grade, then, uh, we're working towards getting that population tested in third grade and then continuing to wind down so that everybody gets a chance to take the test at least once uh, through their middle, through their elementary school time period? Or how are, how are we managing that?
Uh, no, sir. We do district-wide testing in second and fifth grade. And then, it's just based on referral for third and fourth grade, uh, based on that piece. And that's based on the research because research does say that we should not test students more than once in a year. And we need to give them time for growth for that piece of it. And so, usually, what we try and do is to give them a year in between the time that we have tested them with that piece of it.
Okay. And so, the, then, every, everyone, so if I, if I come in, uh, in the third grade, if I come into the division, I would take, I would get the test at that time because everybody gets the test in second grade? In other words, all students get covered by the test?
Yes. Now, if you are brand-new to the system, you can certainly, uh, request for a referral. So, at any time, if you're brand-new to the system.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, we will move on to item five point oh four, Newport News Fiber Optics Network. And we'll have Mr. Chris Jenkins come up, and he's going to elaborate about our fiber optics network that was installed in two thousand and four, which provides twenty-five hundred students and fifty-one schools and sites across our division, digital books, security services, and screening content. So, Mr. Jenkins, the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Brown, Dr. Parker, and members of the board. Um, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of our, uh, of fiber optic networking in general, tell you a little bit about the technology. Uh, and then, I'm gonna tell you about how we've used, uh, NNP, uh, NNPS has used fiber optic technology in our network. Talk a little bit about the agreement we have with the city, uh, for their use of our fiber. Uh, talk about what our current unused capacity is. And I'm gonna wrap it up by telling you what some of the potential future uses are for this technology. So, it's exciting stuff. I, so I brought props with me. Ms. Hinton has an actual sample of the fiber optic cable that we're gonna pass around. So, as I'm talking to you about a strand of fiber optic cable, it's the very smallest piece in there. It's about the diameter of a human hair, just so you know exactly what we're talking about. Uh, the technology is not new. It's been, um, it was conceptualized back in the nineteen twenties. They just didn't have the manufacturing techniques to actually make it. Um, and it uses, uh, a tiny strand of glass that you're holding in your hands uh, to transmit and receive data at very high speeds. I say it's not new, but it is, uh, it's continued to evolve. It was developed, uh, in the seventies, and then, it became widely-available technology in the eighties and through the nineties and the early two thousands. It's just continued to increase. Um, and the improvements allow higher-capacity bandwidth, and they allow it to, the, the network speed to be higher and the distances to be greater. So, I'm gonna move on and tell you a little bit about our network. So, fiber optic technology and the cable that you have, that is, uh, when we talk about our network, that is the vehicle that our network runs on. Uh, just like Waterworks has infrastructure in the ground to carry water throughout the city, we have infrastructure in the ground, a pipeline, so to speak, of fiber optic cables to, to deliver data to our schools and to our offices. It allows us to send and receive tens of billions of bits of data per second over a single hair-like strand of, of that cabling. Our network has three rings, and they're redundant. So, if, uh, each building is connected to at least two rings, so if there's a cut on one of the rings, everybody still has a path to get back to our data centers. Everybody still has a path to get back to the internet. Uh, we have about seventy-five miles of total of fiber optic cable running throughout the city. There's nine hundred and sixty of those individual strands. And, um, as Mr. Hunter, uh, told you in the beginning, it connects fifty-one of our schools and sites. Uh, a little bit of background. It was installed in two thousand four at a cost of twelve point five million dollars, uh, which is a huge price tag. And thanks to some legislation that was passed in the General Assembly in two thousand and two, NNPS was able to, um, to take advantage and, and make this purchase without actually incurring any debt. So, this legislation allowed us to spread the cost out over multiple, uh, budget years. So, we spread it out, um, excuse me. We, um, we spread it out and made our final payment in two thousand fifteen. Uh, the current market price, uh, listed there, the current market value, thirteen point five million dollars reflects about five hundred and forty-four dollars per strand per mile. But what I'm gonna talk to you about next is the real value of the fiber because the market value is just, um, is just what we paid for it in today's dollars. The real value comes in the benefits, what we've been able to do with it uh, and how we've been able to take advantage of it. So, right now, we do have connectivity for over twenty-five thousand student computers. And the nice thing about the network is that it's scaled. So, if we need to increase that number, um, the network will, is more than capable of, of handling whatever we need. It's allowed us to provide fast and reliable access to a whole lot of educational online content, Google Classroom, Khan Academy, Desire to Learn. Um, and it's allowed us to do this, uh, we can, we can provide as much data as we want at no additional cost, um, for the transport of the data. One of the biggest areas where you can assign a dollar value to it is that it's allowed us to save money in the, in the leased lines that we used to have for telephones, for example. Since we run our telephone system over the network, you no longer need an individual phone line for every phone in your building. So, it's allowed us to save money there. And prior to the fiber optic network, we had dedicated leased circuits to each of our buildings. Um, so, when we're calculating what, what our total savings has been, um, I just went out and got the contract price from, from, uh, from VITA for a leased line service similar to what we have. And it comes out to four thousand one hundred and forty dollars a month. So, if you take that four thousand one hundred and forty dollars a month, and you multiply it by fifty-one sites, and then, you multiply that by twelve months, by fourteen years, we would have spent over thirty-five million dollars to transport the data. And all we had, and, and, and for that same twelve point some million dollars. So, that's a savings of twenty-two point nine million dollars over the last, um, fourteen, fifteen years, uh, for this network. And lastly, I wanna talk a little bit about the flexibility. Because the, the cable is in the ground, what goes across it and how much goes across it is determined by what we connect to it. So, it's virtually future-proof in that we can just swap out the equipment when we get to a point where we need to get more data or more distance. Moving on to our agreement with the city, we signed an agreement right around the same time that we put the fiber in the ground. And it gave the city exclusive right to use forty-eight strands of our fiber for a forty-year period. The city paid, uh, the school board six hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars um, for the right to use the fiber. And then, they also paid all of the costs associated to connect their network to our fiber. So, the school board didn't incur any of that cost. We have a sharing agreement with the city where they share the maintenance costs with us for the fiber optic network. And part of that agreement, they pay fifty percent of our annual maintenance. Uh, and they also pay for fifty percent of the locator services. So, most of you are familiar with Miss Utility. So, when somebody wants to dig, they call Miss Utility, make sure they don't dig up our fiber. Uh, the city pays half of that. And the city pays the cash equivalent of one FTE for our network technician to support the network. Um, we bill them quarter, or we bill them quarterly. And to give you an idea of how much they're paying on an annual basis, it comes, it came out to about eight, eighty-nine thousand dollars during seventeen, eighteen. Uh, moving on to talk a little bit about our spare capacity. And what you've got is a, you're looking at a map of the city, obviously. And I thought it would be helpful if you could see which rings serve which portions of our city. And then, I gave you a breakout of what we have total on that ring, and then, what we have available on the ring. So, looking at it, you can see that, uh, Ring A has the least amount of fiber. So, when we talk about how much spare capacity we have, that ninety is the number that we use because we need to be able to connect somebody from one end of the city to the other, which means it has to go across the A-ring. Uh, so, that's how we come up with the determination of what we have spare. I already told you that hardware upgrades in our future would allow us, um, to double or triple the amount of data that we can get across a single strand of fiber if we found ourselves in a situation where we were running out. Right now, with what we have in the ground and what we've already, um, uh, agreed to with the city, we have more than enough fiber to meet any foreseeable needs for the division. And looking at how, if we could, if we had to, um, if we got into a point where we were literally running out of fiber because who knows what's gonna happen twenty years down the road, um, there is technology that's fairly new that would allow us to, uh, we currently use two strands of fiber for each connection to a building. And that's so we have a send and a receive on separate sides. There is some new technology that will allow the speeds that we get at the distance we run that use a single strand of fiber. And that would be an option in the future. Um, the reason we're, we're not interested in it right now is that it is new technology, and it is evolving, and there isn't a real standard for it yet. and there isn't a real standard for it yet. Uh, the modules that are available are not, our, the manufacturer that we use for our network equipment does not recommend that we install these modules into our network, and they're not supported by the warranty. So, and, and most importantly, there's no, really no compelling reason, as you can see by the amount of spare fiber that we have available, there's no, there's no compelling reason for us to do that. I'm going to, uh, wrap this up by talking a little bit about some of the potential uses. So we have this spare fiber. Uh, we know we're getting ready to, to put in a new, uh, backup network operations center over at Scott Center. So we're going to use some of these, uh, some of these spare strands for that. Uh, some of the other things that we've discussed and we've looked into over the years are the idea of a regional fiber connectivity issues where we're partnering with other school systems or municipalities. And that might be school, uh, K-12 school systems on the peninsula, uh, links to colleges and universities like C N U, William and Mary, Thomas Nelson, virtual field trip connections to places like the Mariners Museum, the Peninsula Fine Arts Center, the Virginia Living Museum. And lastly, some, uh, some opportunities to partner with, uh, with folks on STEM opportunities. So Jefferson Labs, Newport News Shipbuilding and New Horizons. And what that would allow us to do, if we, if we had a direct connection to these people, obviously, we can currently connect to them over the internet. But having a private connection to them, um, saves us on bandwidth costs going to the internet, and it also provides a more reliable and private connection for the, to, to bring the two networks together. So that's my presentation. I know it's riveting to talk about technology infrastructure, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Well, I want you to know I am riveted. And I do find this to be very exciting. I am very interested to know, can we and how do we, uh, if it's possible, connect this fiber to our students' homes? To provide internet to the students in their homes?
Firstly, that would require us to partner with somebody, um, who is going to provide that, what we would call, and in communications, they would call that the last mile. So we do have the fiber connectivity out there, and, um, I can think of a number of ways that we could partner with people, um, to, uh, to backhaul the traffic, um, from, from somebody who was going to handle that actual connectivity to the homes. And obviously, there are some challenges in, um, you know, Verizon has a business of installing this stuff. And if you called today and tried to get it, it might take three weeks to get it done. So you can imagine what it would be like for, um, for a private organization to, to start talking about installing things in people's homes. But it's certainly something in these, um, you know, I mentioned on the previous slide, um, the, um, the, um, regional fiber connectivity initiatives. I know on the south side, there is a, a group where of cities that have partnered, and, um, they're sharing connectivity basically to build smarter networks, smart networks for, for their cities. Uh, so certainly that's an opportunity, but the, the key would be that it would have to be through some kind of partnership.
And in doing, in doing that, um, are there sufficient numbers of strands? Is there, um, additional cost to us?
The additional cost to us would be in that we would have to keep the traffic separate from our N N P S network. Because of, uh, the, some of the funding that we get requires that our network, portions of our network, specifically the internet connection, can only be used for N N P S students for educational purposes. So we would get into some issues where everything would have to be completely separate, but the infrastructure is there.
Okay, and in terms of the ninety strands that we believe we have in excess now, if we, uh, wanted to pursue in the future, connecting to students' homes, losing the ninety strands, we could still, we still have a sufficient number of cables to make the connections?
Uh, well, we would, we would need to look at, so if we partner with somebody, we would need to see what their overall design looks like, but I believe.
Just for a point of clarif- clarification, how much does it cost to connect when the city plugs into our fiber? There's a cost that they incur. So I think what we're asking is if we did a connection, last mile, from our fiber to a residential area, uh, in terms of cost on, without a partnership, what, what would the, around the cost, what, what would that be? Because I think there was a significant cost to connect to our fiber from a, from a specific building.
I don't have the, the numbers in front of me for the city, but I seem to remember them paying, um, more for the vendor to install their portion of the fiber than they paid us for the actual fiber strands. So I, I believe they paid over a half a million dollars just to get the, the short distance from, I believe it was one of their fire stations to our fiber ring.
So the, the answer to that question is yes, there would be a significant cost to the school division without some, some level of partnership that would allow those connections to exist, um, because those connections will, would incur a significant cost.
I have a question. Is the fiber, is it built like underground?
It is underground, sir, yes.
So what would happen once the, the student graduate, if we connect to their house, you have to?
Well, we, we wouldn't run our fi- our fiber doesn't run into the neighborhoods, our fiber runs to the school.
So there will be a maintenance involved and anything else with that, with that as well, pretty much almost being a provider like Verizon or something. So it would, it would be very, very, um, intensive.
There are some cities that are, are doing partnerships where they're trying to provide Wi-Fi access. And, and, um, and that is a more likely solution if we were to, if we were to partner with somebody or what some of the other cities are doing is they're leveraging, these initiatives are, are kind of becoming a co-op where they're sharing fibers, say, okay, we want to reach this neighborhood, and we look at who has fiber in that area, and are they willing to let us use it? And, and then somebody else does all the work of setting up the Wi-Fi and getting people connected to it. Because honestly, we're just not set up for that kind of, um, for that kind of infrastructure.
And so in those situations, is it a, um, a Wi-Fi connection to a regional neighborhood? And then the Wi- there's Wi-Fi broadcasted leveraging the fiber in the ground?
Yes, sir.
Wi-Fi to a neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Tell me, Simon.
I mean, that, that's why I think having these community centers in our buildings, like the Discovery STEM Academy, that do have fast internet connection potential, and in the new Huntington, is so important because communities can come into the schools to access, um, the really fast internet. And I, I think that that is a, a service that we can provide the community, especially if we got volunteers willing to staff, like, almost like a, a library in the evenings, so that the community can come in and use, and use our, our fast Wi-Fi, or, I mean, our fast internet.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, in your package, five point oh five, the attendance report, five point oh six, the membership report, five point oh seven, the construction report are part of your package. Does anyone have any questions on those? There being none, uh, we'll move to, um, item five point oh eight, comments by our Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know there were, uh, some attendees in, at the Bloom Conference, uh, for our young lady, so I'm going to reserve, uh, uh, some reflection from, uh, those board members who did, uh, who did attend and not steal their thunder. But I, I just want to say I was very proud to, uh, unfortunately, I was at another obligation, uh, that, that day. But I was just so proud to hear that that, uh, event went well. And, uh, Maria, I'm so proud that you, uh, were one of the initiators of the Bloom, uh, uh, conference and opportunity for students. Uh, as stated earlier this evening, this is, uh, American Education Week, and our students and staff are celebrating the annual observance by promoting the greater, uh, great things happening in our schools. I want to take a moment to thank all the families, the P T As, the members of our, of the community who are visiting our schools and participating in many activities taking place this week in our classrooms. Uh, the festivities will, uh, conclude this week, but we just want to continue the spirit of, uh, supporting American, uh, public education in particular, uh, in America, and what it does, uh, in terms of changing lives for our students and families. Uh, this week is also School Psychology Awareness Week, and I want to thank our school psychologists for all they do to promote healthy and safe learning, uh, environments. Our psychologists provide crucial support services for our students and their families. Uh, they apply expertise in mental health, uh, learning and behavior to help students succeed academically, socially and emotionally. Uh, thank you for supporting our students. I look forward to the upcoming Take Your Legislature to School Day on Wednesday, November twenty-eighth. Uh, we have a nice program planned for our local, uh, elected officials and those who will be in attendance. Uh, it will be, I, I can assure them it will be time well spent, uh, in our schools, with our teachers, with our students, and, uh, and supporting, uh, Newport News Public Schools. Uh, we're hoping that we'll get a great turnout with our city council, business and community leaders. Hopefully, will join us as well on that, on that day, and always looking forward to the bus tour. I will also be hosting the first State of the Schools address on third, the next day, on Thursday, November twenty-ninth, uh, at six-thirty P M, uh, at the David Student Union Ballroom on the campus of Christopher, Christopher Newport, uh, University. So I'm encouraging family, staff, and the community to come out and join me, uh, as I share some of the highlights uh, from, uh, my first one hundred days in Newport News Public Schools. And, uh, and I'll highlight certain, uh, student achievement, uh, successful partnerships, and the work, uh, as it relates to moving our strategic plan forward in Newport News. Uh, invitations will be sent out for a special, uh, reception prior to that event. Uh, but the actual program will begin at six-thirty at C N U, so I encourage those to, um, our community to come out and support. Uh, I'd like to remind all students and parents that school will be closed, uh, for students on Wednesday through Friday, November twenty-first and twenty-third for the Thanksgiving holiday, and I wish everyone a safe Thanksgiving holiday, and, uh, that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Parker. At this time, we'll move to item number six. Do we have any more cards there? There being no cards, we'll move on to item number seven, matters by the school board. We have first, uh, Ms. Jones.
Um, well, good evening, everybody, uh, just, wow, it's a kind of a lot to say, okay, so, um, but I'll go quickly. The first one I really want to thank, so Bloom, unfortunately, I was unable to attend. I was in Los Angeles, California, for the National League of Cities Conference. I was there with the Mayor's Youth Commission, representing the city of Newport News. But, um, since I've, I was alerted to, uh, receiving the award, I didn't know, however, that they were coming to present it to me tonight. So since I got it, I've just been looking down on it and smiling. It is honestly, out of the many things that I've done, it's one of the things that I'm most proud of because it's something that is continuing on and that not only the girls who are, who have the amazing fortune of attending it can see, but the people outside of it, the community and the parents and their relatives, and even people outside of Hampton Roads are really seeing the impact that it has. So it just, it makes me so proud to know how big it's become, and it makes me so proud to know that I got the opportunity to work with Ms. Adams on planning it. I'm like starting to tear up talking about it, um. It's just, it's, it's awesome, um. As far as the award recipients for the Wise Awards, um, they're not here anymore, but, you know, congratulations, that's an awesome award. I remember Mr. Brown was my personal finance teacher, and last time when he got the award, I was sitting in the front row, and I was taking personal finance online, and I hadn't turned any of my assignments for that quarter yet. So I kind of shrunk in my seat, hoping he wouldn't see me, but he caught me and he made sure I did my assignments. And I passed the class with an A. He made sure we passed, um. As far as, um, L.A., it was amazing, it was an amazing conference. It was geared towards political advocacy and civic engagement in youth. However, there is a lot that I learned, um, that I was able to take back and apply towards my academic career, specifically me being a student leader on the school board. I learned that there's a lot of resources available to not only cities, but school boards as well, um. And I'm really excited to have the opportunity to not only present that to some of you guys, but also city council, watch out. I will be at city council meetings, um, a state legislature, watch out, you will see my face, and the White House will also see my face as well. So, um, I am prepared and I'm going to take over the world, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, Dr. Bess?
Uh, good evening, I'll be brief, uh, that's well. I had the opportunity to attend the Bloom's Conference on Friday night for the rally and award ceremony. It was absolutely, um, amazing. We were greeted with cheerleaders coming into the building, so my girls, they were like, what is, what is this all about? I was like, just enjoy it, just enjoy it, and that is exactly what they, um, did. It was just the positivity, the, the older girls leading the younger girls, the well-oiled machine, how it operated. Everything had a purpose, it was timely, it was relevant, it was just indescribable. So Miss Bridget Adams, just hats off to you and your staff, it was absolutely, um, amazing. Also had an opportunity to attend the library, uh, rededication at Newton Park Elementary School, and I shared with the attendees that that school had, held a special place in my heart because it was the, my first grade school, it was the first school that I attended in Newport News, uh, public schools. But as I was sitting here reflecting for a minute, I thought about the fifty-year lifespan of schools. That school opened in nineteen sixty-seven, the new school, so in the year twenty-twenty-seven, it'll be fifty years old. So we'll be talking about replacing Newton Park. But moving right along, I attended, uh, Veterans Day Ceremony at Greenwood Elementary School. The kids were so excited, the parents were so grateful, and the veterans, they were just, um, in awe, and they were very thankful for the cards and just the appreciation at the student show. But we do want our parents that are veterans to know, we do, um, appreciate you. Um, I served on the Special Ed Advisory Committee, had an opportunity to attend my first meeting. And as a former school employee, I know what the Special Education Department does is, is awesome in, in youth development. But to sit in a meeting, hats off, hats off to you, the, the detail of, of what it takes to be in compliance of such a regulated part of the educational system and how it's ever-changing and the needs of students. The guest presenter talked about autism, and I know twenty years ago, we didn't really talk about that. So just, it's, for me, the first nine weeks, the students talk about the first nine weeks, but the first nine weeks for me as a school board member had, just has been very eye-opening. I have grown and I'm looking forward to growing more and learning more, so I, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bess. Um, Ms. Simons?
I also really enjoyed stopping by the Bloom Conference on, um, Saturday and seeing all the excitement and energy. And I'm, I'm thinking maybe we need to, um, see if we can partner with the Hundred Plus Men Organization and, and have something similar for, for the, the young men in our community, because I think it's, it really is empowering. Um, I also wanted to really thank, um, Mr. Fineran for the report on the legislative agenda. I am really excited about it. I mean, I think that it is amazing. We're focusing on such important things, school safety, teacher salaries, and also school construction. Because I think we do have a moment right now in the state of Virginia where there might be some extra revenue generated to help us with schools. And, um, as his report shows, there really is no funding coming from the state of Virginia for school construction right now. That ended with the recession ended around two thousand and ten. So, um, there's a little bit of money in this literary fund, but it hasn't been used. Nobody's gotten any of that money since two thousand and twelve. So we need a plan, and we need to talk to our state legislators about a plan to help us because it is very rough on city councils and localities around Virginia to deal with these aging school buildings. Right now, um, our average school is over fifty years old. So we have to recognize that there's a crisis brewing, and you know, if they would help us with some, um, maybe bonds, we, we could, you know, generate the, the funding, um, to pay down those loans. But we, we need a way to finance school construction in Newport News. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Uh, Mr. Ely?
Thank you. Well, the Bloom Conference was amazing. They said it was for ladies, but I wanted to see what it was about. Those girls was having an amazing time. They were dancing, they were singing. It was just great fellowship, so the guys, we're going to have one coming up soon. I also had the opportunity to attend, um, Huntington Alumni Candlelight Visual. It was very good to see the unity of the community come together in the fellowship. I was out there along with Dr. Bess and Dr. Sandra Cherry from council. And just for to see the community wants and needs and their support of a new Huntington Middle School was very great. It felt, it was very heartfelt, I mean, to let us know as city officials, uh, uh, well as the community know, they want another school in their community, and that's as elected officials have to make sure that happens and realize that it's not about us, it's about the community and it's about the children. And I feel once we, as leaders, take that standpoint, letting the community know what they want and give them what they want, I think we definitely, and we will go and build another Huntington Middle School. So a special thanks to everybody who came out to the Candlelight Visual, it was very great and very well organized. Also tomorrow, we are, I'm partnering with Ivy Baptist Church and Heritage Child School. We're doing a community dinner, Thanksgiving dinner. We feed the community, we prepare to feed over a thousand citizens. We're going to have fun and games, it's totally free for everyone, we've got bounce houses. We're going to have basketball games, we have entertainment, we have choirs performing. So definitely, um, if you're in the area, please come out tomorrow from four to seven at Heritage Child School. I'm also working, um, with the, the community on a Wonder on Washington Holiday Parade. It's going to be. It's gonna be December the 15th and it's gonna be on Washington Avenue in Newport News. So far, we have over 65 units that's confirmed to be in the parade. We have bands, drill teams, community organizations and dance teams. So if you are interested in going, just shoot me an email and I definitely forward it over to the right people to make sure you're in the holiday parade. And that's it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ely. Uh, Ms. Lisa Searle-Lawes?
Well, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Beckerdite for her, um, very inclusive, um, presentation this evening. Um, this is, uh, an area that I think Newport News Public Schools does very well and it's good to hear how we do that. So thank you for your time this evening. Um, I got the chance to go to the Newsom Park, um, STEM, uh, opening and it was just wonderful to see the space that is designed for students in that school. Um, what I enjoyed though, really was the contractors who were there with the opening and the, the joy that they saw on their face to see how that building is going to be used and to see that space, um, that they created, uh, for the students was really an encouragement. Um, I got to hear some neat stories about this children who are starting to spend time there. Uh, behavior is changing in the building as they're getting, uh, possibilities to take leadership roles and keeping the space, uh, rolling and moving. Uh, I think that is very, um, insightful on the group to, to do that for the students. Um, and I also enjoyed seeing the parents see that their children are in a good space. Um, the Bloom Conference, I guess I gotta get on that bandwagon. Uh, it was absolutely delightful. I, you know, things come on your calendar and you say, I should do this. So I decided, yes, I'm gonna stop there on my way home. Well, I think I had been there about an hour and I got a buzz from home, what's for dinner? And I said pizza. Because I was gonna stay until the end. It was just wonderful. Um, Mrs. Adams just, uh, puts her heart and soul into that and watching her do that, has the children do that, has the students do that. The cheerleaders from Woodside, they could have been doing anything that evening, but they were there to help lead these, uh, young women and it was a very fun time for all. And I guess my last thing is I'm pretty excited about our joint, uh, meeting with, uh, city council, um, for the capital improvement plan. Um, this is where the rubber hits the road and this is what we're here for. So I'm really looking forward to that.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, uh, I wish I had, uh, Mr. Tremaine Knight, uh, here to, uh, write some words for me. He, he, um, uh, really gave, uh, uh, an impassioned speech. I think, I'm always very encouraged, especially when we see young people. Uh, it lets us know how well we're educating our young people to see, we had two students tonight who came out and spoke to the board. Uh, I think, uh, regardless of, uh, of where we come down or whether we agree, it's, it's always so wonderful to hear someone articulate their thoughts so well. I heard, uh, great rhetoric there, uh, you know, snake shedding its skin and all that. I'm not gonna do that well here with my few, uh, comments here at the end, uh, but, uh, that is, uh, very encouraging to, to see how our youth are becoming college career and citizen ready. Uh, you, uh, adults, you can take a lesson from our young people. We had two students come out, I didn't see, you know, I don't see too many adults come out to our board meetings. I'm always happy to hear from the community and the public whether I agree with you or not and always happy to, to hear the questions and hear the challenges of, of how you want us to move forward. And that's, um, really, I think, a theme, uh, for us, uh, you know, not just tonight, but at, all the time that Newport News Public Schools were constantly moving forward and getting, uh, lots of forward momentum. Uh, I'm gonna be at the Virginia School Board Association, uh, Conference, uh, this week and tremendous, we'll see forward momentum there, we'll see, uh, progress, uh, that we've done. Uh, Newport News Public Schools will be on display and celebrated. I believe that we're gonna be, uh, uh, one of the speakers at the conference because of our selection process and our superintendent search that we did such a, uh, great job that we were selected to, uh, present at the conference. So again, moving, moving forward, uh, always, uh, making improvements. We had some selections of some new, uh, principals this evening. I'm looking forward to some great things, uh, at Warwick High School and Woodside High School. Again, moving forward, uh, moving forward, we've had, gone from, uh, in 2008, it was 72.9% in terms of our graduation rate. Today, it's 93%. So constantly moving forward, dropout rates gone from 12% down to 2.1%, constantly moving forward. It was visionary. We got fiber optic cable when other school divisions weren't even thinking about it. Constantly moving forward. Now you hear me talking about it, what about, what's about next? How can, can we, uh, get internet access to all of our students' homes? Constantly moving forward, constantly moving forward, uh, making that next step. We do, we do have a crisis right now, we need to move forward on, uh, replacing our schools. We have a capital crisis. As you've heard, the average, um, age of a school building, the average lifespan of a building is 50 years. Well, the average age of our school buildings is 50 years old. So we're already in a crisis, we've already had, uh, issues and things happen with, with Huntington. We know we have issues with Warwick and with Denby High School a- as well and, and other schools in our division that are past their age, long in the tooth, as they say. So we're, we're already in the crisis, live in the crisis and so we have to, uh, treat it that way. We're constantly moving forward and I know that we, we will, um, get the average age of our buildings reduced, uh, in the coming years and, uh, we're, we'll be in a strong position like we always have, always have been, and we'll continue to produce those kinds of results. So I'm encouraged about, uh, this, this coming year and, and what we're gonna see in the next month. We're gonna have a great meeting, uh, with our, our council members and have some good discussion there on how we can all move forward together. We're gonna have a State of the Schools address. So the community's gonna get a chance to hear about how we can move forward. Uh, that's gonna be a Thursday night at Christopher Newport University again. I believe that is, uh, November the 29th.
We're not.
November the 29th, 29th at 6:30 PM. Time to move forward, all right? So, um, looking forward to this month. Y'all have a happy Thanksgiving and, uh, enjoy some time with your families and look forward to seeing you again next month.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brown. Well, I guess it's me between you and us going home, so again, there's great things are happening here in Newport News Public Schools. Um, I just want to reiterate again, uh, about the four young folks that came up to, spoke to speak with us today, the two gave the invocation and the pledge of the flag, uh, Mr. Tremaine Knight, who, uh, again, I use that word a lot when he says, how to eat the elephant, that's one bite at a time. And so I'm glad that he did come out to speak, uh, and, and with one, one movement at a time. And so we'll see, I'm quite sure that the school system will, uh, take, see what he has on a plate and see if we can move anyway. Uh, again, uh, congratulations again to Ms. Jones for that great accolade that was, uh, delivered by one of your friends and your students. Uh, congratulations again. Again, I was at, uh, Greenwood Elementary, again, for the veterans. Uh, thank you for showing up, uh, Dr. Best. Um, I didn't know I could march around the building twice with so many brave fanfare, but it was unbelievable that the morale of the students at that school, um, it was, I was happy all day. I went back and showed the video to the folks there where I work at and they were just amazed of the energy in that particular school. Uh, again, I'm looking forward to our State of the Schools. Dr. Parker, I think this is a good time, it will be a good opportunity for the public to come out and to hear, uh, what a true State of the Schools is and, and hopefully we can get some more momentum. I, I'm, will say tonight, I miss my Huntington folk. And I'm.
City council.
And they're, they're at city council. That's what I realized, that they were at city council, um, um, supporting, uh, the Huntington. And so, uh, I, so again, I know they're looking out there, uh, you were missed, but I know exactly where you were. So again, thank you for continuing to support, uh, your dreams and the, the school system dreams. Uh, I want everyone to have a safe and happy Thanksgiving Day for those who are traveling, much like myself. Uh, safe travels on the road, uh, don't eat too much turkey and, uh, and, uh, as I always say, uh, this, after next week, it's the, it's the best time of the year for me. Uh, Thanksgiving opens up a special time for me and my family and hopefully to the country. Um, folks are typically, uh, more happy, uh, they're more generous and then for those who may not, uh, be so fortunate, just reach your hand out and say hello, give them a hand. We were at a food drive this week with, uh, one of the local churches and the Divine Nine at Hampton University on Sunday. It was just great unity. So at this time of year, um, I pray for all those folks again who are out there in California, those fires. And, um, again, uh, we pray for them and hope they have the best Thanksgiving they can possibly have. It's another service I want to bring to, uh, to the front when it deals with schools. If you heard on TV, there's been some terrible accidents with folks driving around buses. And, uh, we, that came up a couple of years ago, we've talked about it. And I would ask again, that this board again reconsider about, you know, taking that thing up again, about having that extended arm on the buses. I'm telling you, kids, when a car comes around a bus at 40 miles an hour, I mean, you see what happened. Twins are passed, the sisters, uh, a sister died. Uh, folks are busy in the morning and, and I go, I go to work every morning, I drive about 17 miles. I can't believe the number of times I ride by someone who's on the phone going down 64 at 75 miles an hour passing me in, in, in the slow lane or in the fast lane. And, um, when it comes to kids, uh, and I think we, as board members, that we need to do all we can for the protection of our kids. We have, we transport 25,000 kids, 24,000 kids each and every day on buses. And so I, I want this board to at least consider, um, our discussion and bring that discussion up again about the safety of our kids on buses. That being said, um, no one has anything else. Again, have a safe Thanksgiving and we'll see you, uh, next month. I will adjourn the meeting.